All right, welcome. Um, all please rise and pledge in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the universal, but delivering justice for all.
All right, let the roll call show. Um, all board members are present except for Sue Van Hooser. And we have Eric Minx tonight via Zoom.
Yeah.
And Eric Strandberg is not here tonight either. Um, we'll move on to citizen comments. And we have Samantha, is it Provost? Did I say that right? If you want to come up and, um, join us. I will, um, just go over, um, initially just what our, our citizen comment section is and then the guidelines for that. Um, please keep all comments to three minutes or less. Um, due to data privacy, please do not use people's names in your comments. Your comments, um, aren't addressed at this meeting. It's just here for you to, to, um, give us your comments. Um, the superintendent will contact you at a lot, at a later date to work things out. All right? Welcome Samantha.
Thank you.
Um, you can go ahead.
Um, so I guess what I, and my biggest concern, um, is that the students that are enrolled and participating in the IEP programs through the school, um, are being, I don't really use the word neglected, um, but that is the only word that really comes to mind at this point. Um, I have been in contact with a lot of other families. Unfortunately, I'm the only one who has shown up tonight. Um, but there are a lot of concerns of whether, um, our kids are kind of being swept under the rug and if our children are actually being heard. Um, personally, I've had my son in the IEP program for two years. Um, I just recently enrolled him in therapy as well. Um, and his therapist met with him for two hours total and brought up a lot of other concerns regarding his mental state. Um, and for two years, I feel like we haven't been heard. As a parent, I don't, this is my first go around with IEP. So I don't know necessarily the ins and outs and I will be the first to fully admit that. Um, however, I think that's why we trust our students with those teachers. Um, and for them to not really be meeting the needs of our students, I don't think. I'm just really, really concerned. And I think that the IEP department as a whole, uh, kind of needs to be looked at is really where my concerns lie.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to?
There's probably a lot, but I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on then, um, to board member committee reports. Um, starting with them.
Um, since the last meeting, I've had executive, um, community ed. On this past weekend, we had a robotics tournament here at the high school. We had over eighty teams for middle and high school. A lot of kids, um, a lot of great robots that were built and, um, skills being shown. Um, Princeton did very well at both middle school and high school level. Um, and we got some teams at the high school level that are in the top ten for the state, which is awesome to see. And then I also had the honor of talking with some fifth graders and their parents about the role of a school board member. So that was exciting and fun to do as well.
Some future school board candidates, maybe?
All right, Melissa. Um, I had the Rum River Co-op meeting, um, the Schooltime Task Force, uh, which would come, which is later on in the agenda. Um, and then also the community ed meeting. And last night I was able to attend the choir concert, which was beautiful as always.
Yes, it was.
And. Not our best, not our best. It was wonderful.
Yeah, and that's about it. All right, Chad, what can you report, Jonathan? Uh, Eric Minx, what do you got for us?
I have nothing to report.
Okay.
Um, I attended a couple of, uh, public engagement meetings. Um, we had agenda planning, we had finance before this meeting. And, um, I also got the opportunity to, um, Congressman Staubert came to the high school maybe two weeks ago. And, um, I was able to, um, be in on that, um, also. So that was pretty exciting. Um, next we have the student council report.
Yeah, so, um, Leo Club is doing their prom dress drive. If you have any prom dresses that are gently used and are willing to donate, um, feel free to email me. Otherwise, bring it to Ms. Moose at the high school, the librarian, she will put it in our little storage. Um, pop tab drive went well. We collected, we as a Leo Club, collected twenty-nine point five gallons of pop tabs. So they'll all go to Molly McDonald House to provide meals, which is insane and one of our highest numbers. And then speech team, we had been doing really well these past few weeks. We got first and third. And now we're going to Saint Michael this weekend. And in a few weeks, we have our home meet, the twenty-fourth, I think. I don't really know. I'll get back to you. But it's on a Saturday, so feel free to come. Twenty-fourth, see?
Um, and student council just hosted their first semi-formal snowball dance and it went really well from what I hear. I was not there, I was in Texas, but from what I've heard, it went really well. Everyone liked it, the, like, decoration turned out phenomenal. We had a lot of people actually attend it, which.
Thanks to the janitors who were able to solve a disco ball crisis.
Yes. Um, and right now we are working on candy grams for Valentine's Day, so they're for sale at lunch, a dollar for Hershey Kiss and then fifty cents for a ring pop. And then, as you guys may know, one of the custodians has just recently passed. So we are making a thank you card and like, uh, little best wishes and like, get well kind of thing to our family, so.
And we cut it out at lunch, so hopefully students will sign it. Either they actually do it, questionable or not. But we're trying.
We have had a lot of people sign it today. So, and today was the first day, so it's going good.
Is that it? Thanks. Ben?
Uh, thank you Chair Alm. Uh, thank you student council, uh, board representatives, uh, for remembering Tom Fischel. Um, extraordinary person and team member for our school district. And, uh, hearts are very heavy, um, to see one of our team members, uh, pass and it happened very quick. I had an opportunity to visit a, this, a wife. Um, and we've sent out, um, some of the, uh, celebration of life information and, and, uh, we just hope that we can be there for the family. And, uh, we're still, you know, discussing some things that we can do, but it's just such an important thing for us, so. Uh, sad, sad thing. And it all, it reminds us all on the, uh, how fragile life is. And the fact that we have to live life to the fullest every day. Uh, I want to acknowledge our team members and our staff as a whole. I mean, we're, uh, we've passed the halfway point of the school year. And, uh, the work that they do is incredible. We serve, uh, close to three thousand three hundred students. And that's a lot of people when you think about it. And I always share with you, the town that I grew up in had twenty-five hundred students. And I, at the time, thought it was the biggest place in the world. Right? Um, so on any given day, thirty-three hundred students in our, in our buildings. Uh, we're also proud to be the largest, or one of the largest employers in our community, uh, as well. Um, but the, the, we, we work to improve the lives of human beings and we know the world that we live in. And we know that the issues of society, society don't, uh, we don't have a force field around our building, right? That, that those things don't creep in. And our staff and team members, every single day, work to provide a climate and culture where we have the conditions, the optimal conditions for learning. And it's tough, um, but it, it is incredible to see every day. And we started the year off talking about we need to stay focused. We need to stay focused on teach, teaching and learning. Our teachers want to teach, our students want to learn. And, uh, we want, we want to see some real strong growth in student achievement. And, uh, you know, we're coming into the dog days of school years, right? We're, we're all going to be tested and there's going to be lots of anxiety and stress more than ever. And, uh, it's something that we just all have to band together and continue to, to stay strong and do great things for our students in our community. So I think it's just so important for us to continue to acknowledge the strong work of our team. I do want to clarify, um, some remarks that I shared last, uh, week and especially just clarify because I know it was a headline in the Union Times, um, that we were, are going to cut three point five million. And if I, if I led you to believe that, um, that's on me. Um, the intent of me sharing information was to share that we had, uh, approximately a three point five million dollar shortfall. Okay? Now, we know that there's different ways to bridge that gap. It's, and it, and it will not, uh, all because, right? That's, that's the difference when we calculate expenditures and what we're getting for revenue at that point in time was about three point five million dollars. Now thankfully, the board has been, uh, worked strong over the years to have a, a savings account or a fund balance to help us weather these storms. And we've done that every single year. Um, but, um, a shortfall and the difference between expenditures and revenue doesn't mean all cuts, right? So that's a deceiving piece there. We will have to make some reductions and we always have to look at your revenue and expenditures. But, um, there's a combination of several things that we'll have to look at to get to that point. Um, the other piece that's important for people to know is that, uh, you know, our finance, uh, folks in our, in our team, every single day are, are working tirelessly in their offices on these budgets. And at the end of last year's legislative session, we had over three hundred pages of new legislation impacting schools. Right? And, and every one of those pieces have, many of them have dollars and cents tied to them. So every, on, on any given week, the finance department will get new pieces of information, right? Um, many times the new information is bad, where it hurts us in our budget and sometimes there's things that are good. Um, and those are things that we're constantly kind of working, working on to come up with our best, uh, our best budget, right? Because a budget is, the one thing that people, every person that works in budget will say there's only one certain thing with a budget and that's going to be, it's going to be wrong. Because you're never going to predict exactly how much revenue you're going to get and exactly how much expenditures you're going to have. Right? So you need to use lots of, um, data and work to be able to come up with your best guesses. Okay? So it's, the thing is important to just clarify that because lots of the work that we're going to be talking about the next, uh, in the rest of tonight and the next few weeks is going to be related to, to budget. And as a matter of fact, as I did last time, and I'm sorry, uh, because I'm going to go longer than I normally do with, with my remarks. But I did repair some, uh, prepare something that is in, uh, um, that I, that I'm going to share and read to you, okay? And it's in relation to a memo that I've just recently shared with the board, uh, regarding funding, okay? As we dig into the way Minnesota funds their schools and, uh, how Princeton, at the end of the day, I can't call it any other way, um, is getting the, the very short end of the stick and it's not fair. And we need to start fighting for our students to have equal funding to the rest of the state. Right? We can't continue to do more with less. Okay, so forgive me, but I'm going to re. And this is in relation to a question that our student school board members brought last week. And I'm glad you brought it up. You said, "Why is it, Mr. Barton, that we receive three thousand dollars per people unit less than the state average?" I don't know that I answered that as good as I wanted to. So I, I did prepare some things. Um, question was, "Why does Princeton Public Schools receive three thousand dollars less per people unit than the state average?" It's actually thirty-one hundred dollars less. Minnesota school funding laws have been cobbled together by the legislature over many decades. There is wide agreement, wide agreement, that the funding formula is broken. Over decades and many governors, there have been work groups and task forces that have studied school funding and each one has come to the same conclusion. And that is, there are many problems with funding and state law, but they are not easily fixed. The problem has been getting worse. In December, the state released its annual fiscal disparities report and funding disparities are at an all-time high. Disparity means the difference between the haves and the have-nots in Minnesota schools. This is not just a Princeton problem. There are thirty other school districts in the bottom ten percent just like us. That means the bottom ten percent. We are all getting the gravity of that? We receive three thousand dollars less per people in the general fund revenue than the state average. We rank, we ranked two-hundred-and-seventy-fourth in revenue and we are among the lowest spending districts out of the three-twenty-eight Minnesota, three-hundred-and-twenty-eight Minnesota school districts. What this tells me and should tell all of you is that we have a revenue problem. We do not have a spending problem. Over the last twenty years, school funding in Minnesota has slowly changed. In two thousand and three, the basic state formula accounted for seventy percent of school district funding statewide. Okay? Follow me here. In two thousand and three, the state formula accounted for seventy percent of, of state funding. Today, it's only fifty percent. How are all the districts bridging that gap? Well, we know it's because they have been forced to go up for, uh, voter-approved local operating referendums. More and more school districts have turned to local voters for ongoing school funding. And most school districts have a voter-approved operating referendum and/or a technology referendum in addition to state aid. We do not have either. Voter-approved referenda are the key component of the way Minnesota now funds their schools. In fact, state law sets the standard cap for operating referendum to be at two thousand and sixty-eight dollars in FY twenty-three. And the state average for voter-approved operating referendums is two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two, which is forty percent of the basic formula. Five rural districts have voter-approved operating referendums in excess of thirty-five hundred. And why, why are some of these numbers different? Because some districts, many districts have been grandfathered in over the years as they kind of change some of these laws. So that's why there are some mini-districts above what this cap is. With no voter-approved referendum, our district, uh, receives seven point two million dollars less than the district of, of similar size with a referendum at the cap. For many years, not asking voters for a referendum was a point of pride for us. We're able to provide high-quality programming, uh, without asking our voters to pay more on their taxes. We believed we are, we believed we were being fiscally responsible, providing students with great education and also maintaining some of the lowest property taxes in the state of Minnesota. Now that the state plans for school districts to have, now that the state plans for school districts to have local referendum dollars as part of the overall funding, we are at a significant disadvantage. There are other problems with the state formula as well. There are many categorical kinds of aid or earmarked funds for areas that don't qualify, that we don't qualify for, or receive much less than other districts. These include compensatory aid dollars, which now is highly restricted in how we can spend them. English learner aid, sparsity aid, operating capital, achievement and equity aid. All categorical kinds of aids that all make up why we have three thousand dollars less per people unit. Last week, I attended the C meeting, which we've been working on fair funding for decades. The problem has remained so persistent that C has changed its name to Schools Advocating for Fair Funding versus School for Equity and Education. And we'll continue to lobby our legislators to fix the funding formula. School board, I provided this document to. I'd like to, actually, did I give you one of these, boy? I'd like, what do you have on that, boy? This document here has every district in the state of Minnesota listed. And it, it, it shares how much money they get from their local property taxes and it shares how much our, each, each community for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house pays in school taxes. Our community will be happy, happy to say we're in the ninth percent though, meaning that. Okay? If you, out of a hundred school districts in Minnesota, okay, we have the eighth or the ninth lowest revenue. Okay? Says it right here. I hope this explanation sheds light on why Princeton schools receives less funding than other districts. It is not anyone's person's doings or problems, but it is a problem our community will have to study and wrestle with for the coming years. The, our schools are our community schools. We've been proud to be able to do more with less over the years, but we have to be realistic and we need to be able to, to fight for fairness. Because the real question is, and I hope our students continue to ask this, is why are we less? Why are we three thousand dollars less than every, than the average student in the state of Minnesota i- as it relates to their, their school funding? We do extraordinary work here. But this is something that the board's going to have to wrestle with. And when I, we get into our long-term, long-range planning and community public engagement, uh, item and, and later on in the, uh, agenda, I'm going to lay out a recommendation to the board, uh, for us moving forward with a public engagement process and a task force to bring as many people together in the community as possible. To not only look at facilities, which we know we have issues and we need to make improvements with facilities, but we need to have, take a comprehensive look at our operating and our facilities all in one pot. Because at the end of the day, okay? There's a strong likelihood we will need to go to the voters for a referendum. We also know that there's only so much that our community will be able to support. We don't know what that's going to be. But where do our priorities lie? And how do we split that, uh, that pie and those resa- resources amongst what the community is willing to bear? And that will be later in the agenda. I apologize for my long remarks and I apologize for reading. I think it's important for you to, to be aware of this. I'm certainly, uh, sick of it. We receive less than everyone else and we continue to try and provide the same and the most high quality as we possibly can. It's just trying to be realistic. So with that, I'll entertain any questions. Otherwise, I'll be happy to, uh, we can move on.
Is there anything that the students can do? Like on the students' behalf?
Well, I think that it would be nice for, um, for me to have an opportunity to meet with a group of students and be able to get students start to advocate. Because I tell you what, one of the, there's really only two ways that we can increase revenue for our district. One is, uh, a voter-approved operating referendum. Two is the legislation, right? And we need to continue to be talking as much as possible about the inequities in school funding and the haves and the have-nots. And have our legislators really, uh, answer the question, why, why are we less more? And I'll tell you what, it'd mean a lot more for them to hear that from a student than it would for me as a superintendent. We have a legislative platform that we created that, that we're going to use when we go to the Capitol. We share it with, uh, Congressman Staubert at the federal level, although we know that the federal government gives us very minimal dollars for our schools, tiny fraction. Okay? Um, we, we need to talk about this whole idea of equity and this idea of the school districts in the state of Minnesota that don't have a voter-approved operating referendum and the ones that do, and why that brings such a large discrepancy in dollars. And why it is so incredibly unfair with the referendums that each community is tied to their local property net tax capacity. Meaning, the more property wealth you have in that community, the more you can spread the dollars out. So the tax impact for each individual, you know, in a high property wealth school district is very minimal. In a low property wealth district, it's high. So logically, common sense would say it's much harder to pass a referendum and get your voters to vote for a referendum if the tax burden is very high versus very low. Okay? Here's a problem we have. Okay? The majority of our legislators, the power, if you will, when you're talking politics, is in the four-ninety-four, six-ninety-four corridor. And to get some of those people to listen or care about what's happening in greater Minnesota is a pretty huge feat. But we need to start doing our part in Princeton to, to really fight for fair funding so that we can do more for our students in our community. Thank you.
Another question.
So what is this decrease in revenue going to look like for the students? And like, how does this situation impact the students at Princeton Public Schools?
We haven't gotten that far yet. I mean, right now, we're just in the process of, you know, this is how much revenue we're going to have and this is what, how much, uh, this is how much revenue we have and this, this is what our expenditures are projecting. And we have to bridge that gap. You know, we've always tried to do our very best to maintain programming. And that will be, I will tell you, that will be a priority for us, maintain programming, not to cut programming. And that's the last thing we want to do is impact the students' experience, right? Um, but there's going to be some difficult decisions that we're going to have to make, for sure.
Yeah, I think it would be, um, a good opportunity to meet with students because I think us, I know we would like to help any way that we can. And I think I know that there are students out there that are willing to help and advocate and.
I, I tell you what, here's a vision I have and kind of a dream. It's, uh, you know, a lot of times when I go to the Capitol, every year when I go to the Capitol, I'll probably go three or four or five times. But I'll go with our, I'll go with MAA, SA Association. I'll go with C, I'll go with MRAA. You know, I'll go with different groups. What I would love to do is say, hey, uh, Princeton Public Schools, we have our own legislative platform. I would love to get a group of, of myself, a board member or two, a bunch of students, a bunch of teachers, and let's go together and let's be Princeton. Let's not be like, you know, our association. Let's be us. Let's talk, let's tell our story. And that's be, that would be a goal that I, that I think would be something realistic for us, um, as the session begins. So let's, let's talk, keep talking about that.
I like that idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ben? All right, hearing none, we will go on to item six, to approve our agenda. Is there a motion to approve our agenda as presented? So moved. Motion's been made by Don, is there a second? Second by Chad. Um, any comments or questions on the agenda? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Agenda is approved. Item number seven, discuss and act on previous board meeting minutes. Um, do I have a motion to approve those minutes as presented? So moved. Motion's been made by Melissa, is there a second? So moved. Uh, second by Don. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. All right, minutes are approved. Item eight, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion's been made by Chad. Uh, any, is there a second?
Second, Melissa.
Second by Melissa. Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. All right, consent agenda is approved. We move on to our information section. First reading of policies. Ellen, did you wanna address those?
So we have three up here. They've all been sent to the different H R admin teams to be reviewed and made recommendations. And so that they know as well what some of these policies are looking like, so they can communicate that to their team members, and so a lot of it's just bringing them up to M S D A's updates and any changes that happened at last year's session. So we only have a few more left from last session.
Well, there were seventy-five, so
You guys are doing awesome.
We're getting close. Any questions about those? That's the first reading, so we'll see that at our next board meeting to approve. Any questions from anybody? All right, we will move on to item nine B, twenty-four twenty-five school calendar.
You know, I think I'm gonna acknowledge Mr. Senney and thank him for a lot of his work. He's spearheaded a lot of this and maybe you take the opportunity to provide some commentary to the board on what this calendar looks like.
Sure, so each year, obviously, we have to adjust our calendar based on holidays, based on other things. I've worked with our administrative team, they've taken it out, their student leadership teams, received feedback from the teaching staff, from custodial, from a variety of different groups, to see what's gonna make the most sense. Each year, we kind of just take a look at where breaks can fall to support student learning. And so this year's calendar kind of mirrors that. Typically, we try to get in that Labor Day to Memorial Day timeframe. This year, we'll actually be very close to that again. And so overall, I think it's a really good process. We do it once a year, so it's kind of nice, because every year then we can take a look at and say, well, what worked and what didn't? And then we can make changes to follow here. So this is the proposed one for this upcoming twenty-four twenty-five school year, and then we'll take a look at twenty-five twenty-six in the fall.
And this is something we'd like to be brought forward at the next meeting to be approved.
Any questions on that?
I just want to think about the first start date. The start date doesn't have a square in it, but
Yeah, the start date and the end date.
And the end date too. Has the, well, the end date has the blue one, but it doesn't have the
Yeah, last year, try.
Yeah, we can color code it. I'll leave that color coded, yeah. I'll get that color coded before the final draft then.
Nina, did you have a question?
Yes, so I noticed that for this year, the A C T is on the schedule, like on the calendar at all. So I was kind of curious about that, because I've noticed that like previously it had on the schedule, and I also have like heard like throughout the high school that the school's not offering like a specific day for the A C T, and it's like the juniors responsibility to take it on their own time. I might take it online and pay for it themselves this year.
Yep, so this is the district level calendar, and then at your building is where they start looking then. Once this is set, then they can start looking at those dates.
Okay.
That's a great question to ask Mr. Jensen about what that's gonna look like for the counseling department, because I know there's been some changes with the A C T process and different things. This will just be the general, like days you're coming to school. Those specific events are gonna be at the building levels. I would love to say I could do all of that.
Yeah, I mean, for the most part, we really do try and and provide as much site based decisions as we possibly can and provide leadership teams the opportunity that have kind of set when they like to do conferences and what might work best. And so some of that stuff will be added at a later date.
So the one that gets mailed home to you is once we've calculated all the additional information.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to nine C, start time task force update.
We'll kick it over to Sarah for this. She's doing some strong work. We have a really committed group of people. And we actually had another meeting today and we invited Palmer in, so she's gonna give, she'll probably come back and give more of a formal presentation at a different date. I did ask her to just give a couple minutes sharing a summary of where they're at.
Yes, like Mr. Burton said, we've had so far two task force meetings. Melissa, if I say something wrong, guide me in the right direction.
My best.
She is our board member chair that sits on that committee as well. It's a committee of about nineteen to twenty of us that it was really important to us that we had cross representation across all the different buildings, community members, parents, P T O, daycare, just kind of a broad, broad, different perspectives. And in our first meeting, it was really welcoming everyone. We had set some norms. We had also wanted to come up with what we felt as our task force was the desired result. And the desired result that we came up with was that we want to be able to provide a recommendation to the school board that is student focused, as well as logistically feasible to be able to do, knowing that the school board ultimately makes that final decision. And then we also went on to talk about our different roles and responsibilities. My role as the facilitator is to help facilitate discussion and get the task force members information and data that they need to be transparent and assist in making those, helping with those different needs. And the task prep members' roles is really to seek clarification, be open to different perspectives, taking that data, collaborate, seek clarification as needed. We also discussed, after we discussed some of our norms, which are those things that guide us, kind of our guiding foundations, because we recognize that there's going to be different perspectives and opinions on on what that may look like and sound like as far as a recommendation. So establishing norms was really important to us. We wanted to be with logic and have that consensus as a group. And then we also wanted to recognize that there are things that we want to consider. And then there are also things that are out of our influence and control that maybe we we just wanted to be transparent in what some of those different things were. And before the task force was even started, when we were looking for people that were interested from Mr. Burton's Tiger Times and those sorts of things and newsletters, anyone had an opportunity to submit what is it that you are looking for for data and research to help guide that task force. And so what we did was we took what anyone ever submitted from the website and we synthesized that into seven or eight different large areas and then brought that to the task force, and the task force said, okay, out of those seven or eight areas, these are the three or four areas that I'm really looking for feedback or data that I need to be able to help make that recommendation. And those areas that that were requested were sleep studies and effect on student learning, looking at the Mississippi Eight comparables, how do our start times and end times end with the other Mississippi Eight schools? And what does the data look like for Princeton? Like, for example, the number of coaches or advisors that you might have in each building, and how many seasons are they coaching? And what does that impact on student learning? And so we divided out that data, we worked together to get that. And we divided that data out in fall, winter, and spring, because each season is very, very different. Like a fall season, you're gonna have things like daylight time. If you have a facility that doesn't have lights, you might have to have earlier start times, those sorts of things. The other piece is looking at district wide activities that we have. And then what is some good transportation need to know data? So like, how many students we have using the tier busing? How many routes do we have? Shortage of drivers, those sorts of things. So when we come back to do that more formal presentation, I can share some of those things as well. But really, the biggest piece was when we were talking about things, I really appreciate the work of that group because they're very open minded to hearing what other people are saying and and really want to try to come up with a recommendation to the board that 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 makes sense. And for community input, because that's really important to the task force as well, that we have on the website. If anyone wants to submit input or something to consider, there's a forum for for the larger community to do that too. That's not on that task force.
And also to add, on that website also, or you can follow along, what after after our meetings, there's our summary or minutes whatever on there, so you can see what we've been doing, so if you're more interested in more specifics.
Yep, what we've looked at. And so there, after that second meeting, that second meeting then is when we started to dive into that data and looked at all of that data after we reviewed our norms. And there were several questions that the task force had around transportation. Like, it goes back to that desired result of what's logistically feasible. So today, some of us met with Palmer management and upper management to kind of help share with them, okay, but what are our possibilities here? Because one of the overall big picture themes that kind of was presented, is there a way to have start times closer together? So then there's some logistic pieces on that, like like routes, amount of trips, length of trips, those sorts of things. So we met with Palmer today, just today, hot off the press. And so we'll be bringing what we learned here today back to that task force, because we meet later in February then as well.
Any questions?
I just will add also that the main idea is so that the students are missing, our secondary students are missing less by being gone, and our coaches are missing or are there for the students that aren't in, is that making sense? The students that are in school that are not leaving are not missing an instructor because they're coaching. So the idea is everybody is getting more instruction time, whether they're an athlete or not.
The one thing that I may add to that a little bit is there's maybe been some good wonderings or questions on, is this for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year? And, you know, it depends on what that recommendation would be from the task force. We know that there's logistically things that would need to to be done, and that may or may not be feasible for for next year. But no, no recommendations or decisions or anything like that has has been made. We're we're in that phase two part of the process that I shared about in December, where we're starting to look at research and data. And then that next meeting is where we're gonna start to talk about maybe some options, and part of that was getting information from Palmer here on what logistically options are. But it could very well be down the road in the future.
Sounds good.
Any questions?
Okay, okay. All right, we will move on to item nine B, long range planning and community engagement.
Emily, would you be so kind as to put my presentation up on the screen, please? And Ford, you should have a link in your board book as well. And I'll go ahead and just get started, assuming she's hearing me. So basically, we need to talk about long range. I've talked to you a lot about our operating budget situation, and I've talked, we've talked for years and decades about facility needs and long range facility needs we have in in our district. We've spent a good year or more prior to this discussing our next step after our failed facility referendum. And we were to a point where we were going to engage our community in a task force to help us, I hope, bring a recommendation to the board on what facilities we would we would address, okay, and the and the cost associated with that. I'm encouraging the board to deviate from that plan and take more of a comprehensive approach and look at the operating and the facilities at the same at the same time. Emily, can you put my presentation up?
She's trying.
I'm working on it. I'm sorry, I'm having a security issue. Give me a minute.
Okay. So anyways, with with our, it starts off with some budget projections. Some of this is some of this is redundant, because I'm gonna, I've shared it with you, but I'm gonna keep sharing it with you. Okay? We do have some declining enrollment. In the past many years, we hovered anywhere between three thousand and thirty-three hundred, right? And it's it's been crazy, and Michelle and I talk about it a lot. It's not been like a a steady decline. We'll have a decline and then we'll have an uptick, and then we'll have a declining and we'll have an uptick. But we are, we we don't have much confidence that we're gonna have many more upticks. We are, when you take a look at just the most basic way of looking at things, graduating between two hundred and eighty students in the senior to three hundred, and we're bringing in two hundred and ten kindergartners. Right? You can take a look at all of our grade levels and you can see how the how that just kind of flows and it looks different. Our declining enrollment is a hundred percent based upon declining birth rates in our area. We've done census and demographic studies, and the birth rates, people are not having babies, especially in the city limits of Princeton. Okay? And unless we get more housing, affordable housing solutions, if we just have the housing inventory that we currently have in our district, I believe that we should expect an ongoing decline in enrollment, because we just have less babies being born. We have rising costs for services and salaries, of course, it's inflation, right? Everybody deserves raises and and increased benefits, and we have eighty percent of our expenditures are human resources. Expenditures are outpacing revenue. You've seen that that chart over and over in terms of inflation and how school funding and there's the gap has only decreased, increased. We don't know what the legislation, legislature is gonna do, but we do know that there is a the inflationary increase limit of two to three percent that the state has provided. So if you look at, if you say, okay, and make some assumptions of a two percent increase in the state aid per pupil unit, we know for our district, that's approximately five hundred thousand. But we also know that on average, our wages and benefits and other inflationary areas increase between two point five and three million dollars a year. So that two percent on the state formula, when you take a look at it every year, we can project out that in so many years, if we don't do something differently, we would be in statutory operating debt. And that's why I need the board to be thinking about this now, so that we have a long range plan as it relates to that. We already talked about the idea that our district receives three thousand dollars less per pupil unit. If we had a referendum at at one of the higher levels, we'd receive seven million dollars, seven point two million dollars more. We have a revenue problem. I'd like to work on, start working on engaging our community. Expenses outpace revenue, looking at five to ten years out, what options exist for protecting the financial stability of a school district that we have today. Keep going, Em. Next one. Thank you. We have facilities, operating budget, and staffing challenges in addition to innovation, innovative educational opportunities we want to provide. Many visions and dreams that we have. One example is is the Creer Academies of authentic, real life, customized experience for every student that enters our school and graduates with us. The district, if the district were to seek additional taxpayer support, what should be funded locally and what the what should the priorities be? An operating referendum, a technology referendum, building bonds, C T Es, others. There have been significant changes in expectations for learning over the years, moving from textbooks to technology, software licenses, annual upgrades, et cetera. What are the community's expectations for innovation in in teaching and learning? Something that we need to talk about as well. So I'm, if we go to the next slide, Emily, I guess I'm proposing a three phased approach that kind of lays out a timeline in this next, in this month that we're currently in. I intend to share information with our team members on the current state of our budget. I, we will go through in in March and April, cost containment strategies, taking a look at our reserves and fund balances and what areas and how much we need to reduce in expenditures. I do also hope, and my intention is, to send a letter and a communication to all of the community members that many of you have already talked to, to bring them all together, to share this vision and this plan for a community task force, to take a look at a comprehensive look over the next year of the future of Princeton Public Schools as it relates to our operating needs and our facility needs. The board has done an amazing job of creating a strong first start of a group for for me to tap into. I want to bring those people together for a meeting, because they've already been talked to and they're expecting for us to communicate and start this process. I do hope to reach out and get many, many other people from our community to be engaged in this process as well, in addition to the people you've talked to. So I'd like to have an initial meeting with them, to share with them the vision and the situation that we're in and the task force that we'd like for them to be a team member on, to go through the journey and bring in a recommendation to the board and to the community, and to share our story and educate our community on where we're at. I mean, the reality is, we need our community members to start believing that these are their schools and 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 own that and be part of the process. And we need to engage the community in that. The timeline after our initial meeting, I goes on to share with them a possible timeline to to bring them back together through a a long process, could be six months to a year of educating them on school finance and all, going through all of our facility needs, protocols with them as well, so that they can provide a strong recommendation on a possible operating referendum, possible bond referendum, possible technology referendum. We want them to analyze all of that and help us prioritize what that looks like. And, you know, there's a strong possibility that that we And, you know, there's a strong possibility that we will have two referendum questions in our future, okay? Because they're different. If you want an operating referendum, you have to go up for that, and you can only go up for those in November, which that complicates everything. But bond referendums, you can go up five different times throughout the year. So my hope is to, I guess, long story short, is to not take a look at these issues in silos, in isolation, but rather bring the community together and educate them on everything, and help go through a process to get them to a spot where they can help prioritize. And this recommendation basically shares that and lays things out. And then my last slide just shares some very, kind of generic, not super detailed, but gives you an idea of some timelines that we'll be looking at in February, will be the rest of this month, and in the March, looking at our budget, our budget containment strategies. We will be considering some soft spending freezes for the remainder of the school year. Recommendation to the board on what these cost containment strategies will be. We certainly go through this every year with staffing as it relates to ULA notifications. That process would be in April and in May. And June, the board must, by statute, adopt our budget for next school year. So we have time, but we don't have a lot of time. And there's a lot of things that need to happen between now and then. And while we're doing this work, we're going to be bringing this community comprehensive task force together to help solve some issues that we have. And the biggest, most important piece of all of this is people in this community and our own team members' willingness to engage in this process, to go, to get educated and aware on, you know, the school funding side of it, to really uncover the fairness in school funding and understand that we receive much less, and we need to make some hard decisions on this, on the future of this community. So more of a comprehensive look versus an isolated book, is what my recommendation will be.
Have a question?
Yes.
I know, like, the names I gave and stuff, I know we're not specifically not teachers because we are having them as a separate, but our community task force, is that going to also have the teachers, or is that going to be a separate?
I'd like to, I'd like to get as many people as possible.
Okay.
I, you know, I think that, I think that it would be a combination of inviting, welcoming our team members to participate in that process, because we know that they're huge stakeholders, and invite them to be part of the greater, you know, community of parents and business owners and, you know, what have you, to be part of this larger group. But I also think we're going to have to be, we're going to have to do some things within the school setting to, so that we can, you know, get input from everybody, because we know that not all team members will be able to participate in, you know, the larger community piece in some of the evening meetings and things. Really...
I mean, even if it's separate than that, and there's a representative to the task, just so that that's also represented in that community task force, because...
But I think the power in this whole process is, I think, the number of people that you get, that you are willing to participate in. Because again, it's the community owning this. These are the community schools. You represent them as school board members.
You know, one thing that, when we attended our conference in January, and I think we got to figure out some ways too, but is making sure that the community feels that they are part of the school system. That was one of the things when I attended, I think I attended like three different referendum workshops, and everyone said, in order to pass a referendum, their community had to feel a part of that school building. And that's what we got to start engaging, is making sure our community feels like they are part of it. That's how we're going to get a referendum passed. They got to feel like they're a part of it, and start engaging them in that process. And, you know, one of them said the simplest thing they did was put on a thank you sign outside each building, and every time those parents drove by, thanking them that they support that building. And I, we need to start looking at some of that stuff.
I have no further remarks.
Any comments or questions for Ben, or your thoughts on the process, or timeline?
Yeah, I like what you have up here, and I think communication definitely will be the name of the game, much like it was when we did the primary school, but yeah, it'd be nice, once we get a little further, to get more detail in that, so we can kind of look at and have a nice strategic plan moving forward, and making sure we involve all the communities. Because one thing that, like I told in the last referendum, I think, excuse me, maybe some of the councilors may not have known, or I think if we get everybody involved, I think that would be the best thing for us, to get them to fully, to get the support from everybody.
Well, that's, that's the hope, is, but, you know, I'm going into this kind of task force with this idea that I don't know what they're going to come up with. Now, my assumption is they're going, they're going to probably, you know, uncover the fact that we need more resources to do what we're doing. And there's a reason why 90% plus of the districts in the state of Minnesota have an operating referendum, and the school buildings are 100% responsibility of local taxpayers to keep their buildings up to date, you know? And it's like, we have to think about what our buildings are like now, but also look out for the next 50 years, and what is the kind of education and innovative experiences that we want our students to have. Right now, we know specifically, moving forward, and we know that the high school is our, is our area that we've been focusing on, or that different groups over the years have been, you know, that was always going to be the next priority after the primary school being built. I mean, that was, that was that group's recommendation 10-plus years ago, right? But there was a line they had to draw and said that communities can only sustain this much. And then this last time, when we had our failed referendum, we, the high school was also, you know, identified as a priority. We also know that with our visions and our strong work progressing with the Tiger Career Academies at the high school, that our, our facilities and some of our career technical areas are barriers to the kind of education we would like our students to experience. You know, just with having updated 21st century equipment and space and those kinds of things in a collaborative kind of a setting versus settings that, you know, were created for education in the 1960s, right? So, yeah, I mean, that's where I'm going to, and this is, we can't, I can't do this by myself as a superintendent, and you can't, this is, we got to get people engaged, we got to get people that own this and be part of this. And, you know, and I'll keep talking to the board, but that includes all seven board members equally, you know, jumping on board and, and being part of this process as well. And it starts with helping me, helping encourage other people to participate in this community task force that's going to be more comprehensive.
I guess the last thing I'd like to just throw out about this is to acknowledge that I am sad that we will be stepping back from where the progress that we made with the building, but I love the idea of marrying them together as, because it is one, I mean, it's two separate issues, but it's, they're so reliant on each other. I really like, like this whole...
It makes a lot of sense. And I think all of the, all the board members would probably share that they're a little disappointed, because we all have that vision for the CTE wing at the high school, and know the importance of having that. But we also have to face reality of where our budgets are at and our revenue coming in. So, I mean, I like the idea also of bringing this together as one, and moving forward with both of those things, and finding out from our community, you know, what are your priorities? I mean, are buildings more important than this, or do we do both, or, you know, what's everybody thinking? I think that's going to be very valuable information for us. Although it won't go fast enough for any of us, I'm sure, especially usually doesn't. But I do appreciate what you've done, Ben, and the timeline. It makes me, I mean, it gives me hope and to know that we have a direction, so thank you very much for that.
I guess I'm also thankful that you will be sending our emails soon to all these people, because I had a lot of people that were very excited for this process, and I do not want to lose their involvement, because that will just hurt us. So keeping that communication open throughout will be...
And, you know, here's the thing, to me, the power is in the number of people we can get involved in this process. And this is where, you know, I've asked for board members to give me basically referrals of people that would be participating. I will be sending out a communication to all of our, you know, 500-plus team members and employees, inviting them to participate, but also giving me referrals of people they know, moms, dads, grandpas, grandmas, aunts, uncles, you know, whoever, who care about education and care about schools and their community, or even heck if they don't care about schools, or they, you know, don't raise my taxes no matter what, you know? I think we need to have everybody represented so we get a good cross-section. And I just think the more, the more participation, the better.
Move on to the next item?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have our first action item, 10A, is the parameters of the state increase percentage.
So, yeah, the state has set 24, 25 at 2%. The reason I'm having a vote on it is some years they, they do relook at that and go higher, so I would recommend the state with 2%.
Yeah, I agree.
There's zero reason for us to believe they're going to increase the second year of the biennium.
And if they do, it'll be a nice surprise.
The tears of joy that's happening.
All right, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the state increase at 2% as presented? Motion made by Chad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Melissa. Any comments or questions before we vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? All right, 2% it is, Michelle. Okay, next parameter is enrollment.
So, yeah, as we talked last time, just about every way we look at this enrollment is we are projecting that we're going to be declining. Of course, the question is, how much? And, you know, we made an estimate last year, and we were wrong. We made an estimate the year before, and we were wrong. So it is our best guess, but that's what we have to use to build the budget. I'm going to let Deb take over with what her and Eric Strember, as our finance committee, discussed tonight, where they thought we should land.
We did just talk about that, oh, actually, we've been talking about it several times in finance. Initially, we were thinking of trying to meet in the middle and go with 72 less students, I think it was, 3,025 for enrollment. And then realizing, you know, thinking about, okay, so we were down 116 students this year, maybe we need to be a little bit even more conservative, but maybe not quite so much? So we talked about landing at 3,010 students.
So it's about a drop of 100.
I've done 100 students. Well, that was, that was the recommendation coming out.
The middle of the middle.
Kind of the middle of the middle.
What we ended up looking at is our projection for kindergarten. We've got like 300 kids eligible, and typically we get about 70% of them to enroll. We were projecting about 2, 26, so that 16 is where that number comes from, so we could get to that 3,010, 3,010, we felt comfortable with. And as Michelle said, we're going to be wrong.
Right. We thought that it would be, it's more realistic to say our kindergarten class would probably be about 2,10. And that was the reason why we dropped back a little bit more, because we were graduating to 60.
Yeah.
And, you know, the reality is, is as we do our Wildabout kindergarten experiences, and we're doing all of our calls and those kinds of things, we will get more of a hard number later in the school year. And if it changes, you know, drastically one way or the other, we will keep you up to date with real-time information as we have it. Sorry, kindergarten safari. Let's call it Wildabout kindergarten.
It's all part of it.
It's a jungle theme.
It's all under the same umbrella.
It's a plug in the door. I don't know what you mean. Yeah.
That's a good one.
I mean, what do I know, I guess I'm not sure.
Well, it's a...
It's a good estimate.
Well, we need the board to vote on that parameter, because that's what we build our budget on.
All right, would somebody like to make a motion to estimate the 2024-2025 enrollment at 3,010 students?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Melissa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Don. Any comments or questions?
We were just, yeah, we were just talking where we're at today, and we're at what looks like 31,000. 31,000. So, yeah, I just wanted to have a...
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, to see where we're at. Yeah, so, thanks for putting that.
Good. All right, any other questions before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. All right, we have no additions to our agenda. You see our future meeting information there. I would entertain a motion to close the board meeting to discuss negotiation strategies.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Don, second by Chad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? All right, the meeting is closed at 7:08.